Okay, we'll move first with the departmental reports. City council members, I don't know if you've had a chance to look through these or not. I think everybody's been tied up and didn't get them, most of them. I didn't get mine until last night, I don't think anybody did. So, might want to look through theirs or something, if you've got questions or need information, additional information about.
Well, I see we have something that we have the animal control officer report on for this upcoming. How many animals do we have on hand now?
Nine.
Nine?
I'm sorry, nine dogs or four cats.
Is everything working out up there? Everything working out up there? It's gonna take time.
What about Bowie Street? Are we finished with that project over there on both, both ends? What about the Christmas in the Park or what they call it, I left my sheet at home. How's that come along with the lights?
We're starting decorating the park as far as setting the pieces, looking at them at the end of October. You'll start seeing some things go up the end of October.
Okay.
Just so that we can get it all in time because Santa Lucia's built.
Oh, good.
And it's nice.
Appears to be no other comment or questions. Do we have anybody signing on the public comment sheet?
We have one.
Todd Hunter.
I'm sorry?
Todd Hunt, excuse me.
I have one more question.
Excuse me, Mr. Hunter.
I see that we have the budget for the Chamber of Commerce that's in here. This is the budget for this upcoming year's and these are the allocations. So I'm assuming they stand within the guidelines that we had set, the amounts of money.
You know, let me, let me think of this list here for me. I don't, I don't really know how, how they go about dispensing the money out to anything here. I know some people request certain amounts or whatever. But I wrote, I wrote, I wrote one letter in to give to, I should imagine, a request for some money. Now, who makes the decision on how this money to be, is that the Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Peak? She does that?
Along with the committee members on the, on the information sheet that is included there. It shows you the committee members that were present at the time that these decisions were made.
Well, what I'm trying to get at here now, they tell me, you know, some asked for certain amounts and they, but I know, I bought one from Ms. Brown and they tell me, I didn't know what to tell her to put out and she didn't know, I just gave it to Tommy. But I think she got something like, I don't know what she asked for, I think she asked about ten, fifteen thousand dollars.
She asked for fifteen, they funded a pound.
Yeah.
I took it on over there, but they were in charge of the dispersal and everything and, and she, she would contact Ms. Brown and then that's, I didn't have any other contact with it. These board member, Jasper Forrester Committee is, is the ones that made and allocated however much, I don't know how they reached that, that of Miami.
Well, it's not God by me this time, but if I'm sitting here and they hear, I remember this. And then I'm gonna review how much these other people asked for and I requested and how much they get. I'm gonna look into it further and I may have some more comments on this. But what we wanna do, we wanna be far across the board. So, if you, if you, if you think in any way that I'm gonna be silent behind this kind of stuff, you know, we want everybody to be treated fairly. And I have some more comments on this fairness in the future. So we wanna, we wanna be careful what we do now and we don't want you to, we don't want to do something that, and think we're gonna lay down and take it. Of course, I'm not, I'm gonna be very vocal about mine. So what's good for the goose, good for the gun. I've said that sitting here before. And when I get enough information on it, then I'll talk about it a bit further. But I've been busy, I haven't had time to work with this, having all kinds of problems. But when I do have time to check it out, then I may have some other comments. Thank you so much.
Any other discussion? Okay, Pastor Todd Hunt requested to be on the public forum. You have three minutes, sir.
I heard someone say Todd Hunter, when he came to town back then, he thought I was the police chief. Because it was Todd Hunter and that was Todd Hunter. Lady said, "Oh yes, you're the, you're the police chief." Because I heard it on the radio. No, I'm not the police chief. He found out that I was the police chief. But I hear today, you know, I don't, I don't believe that you can't have enough prayer. Anytime I go somewhere, I'm gonna bring God in. I know we said prayer earlier, but I wanna say a prayer of, of love and reconciliation in Jesus. So those that will, I'm gonna take this time and pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you right now, Lord, we honor you. Father, we, we are the interest into this area, into this, this city, to this, those who are in choice, Father, and those who are citizens of this city, taxpayers, Father. God, we, we honor you in all that we do, Father. And Father, as a thing that we've gone through in the last few, few days, Father, now we just continue to seek your guidance and your help and your love, Father. God, we are your children. And God, I continue to say, if you're people who are called by your name, will humble yourself and pray, seek your face and turn from our wicked ways, then we will give you heaven. Father, we need your divine intervention, Father. Every individual, every soul that's represented here today, we need your intervention into them, Father. God, when they leave here tonight, Father, you know where they're going and who they are. God, you know their heart, you know what makes their heart beat, Father. But God, I ask you to text their heart. God, we speak salvation. God, go into every dog's heart and sign your light, oh Jesus. God, we praise you right now, we honor you in all that we do. God, touch the mayor, touch every city council man, every city council lady, God. Those are here today, Father. And God, we ask that you would just, we speak your love, your peace, your unattended city, Father. God, we bind the cord of division and the hope of our citizens at the moment of the time. And God, we speak your love, Father. And God, we know that your will is gonna be done. Your will be done, your kingdom come here in earth, the same way it is in heaven. And God, we thank you, Jesus. In Jesus' name. Amen.
I made a mistake at the beginning of this meeting, didn't do something that I should have done. For the record, show that city council, everyone here except for city council member Randy Sayers. Okay, up next, our first item for the adoption is the consider approval for four sets of minutes, annual budget hearing September 12th, 2001. A regular city council meeting September 12th, 2001. Special cause city council meeting September 15th, 2001, uh, 2011. A set, a special cause city council meeting September 27th, 2011. And let the record show, all of those are 2011. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion that we in time approve the minutes, four sets of minutes for 2011.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Is there any discussion? What was that, whose second was that?
Alton Scott.
Okay, Alton Scott made the second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposition? Let the record show, there is none. We'll move to item number two, which is the consideration of resolution number 2911 nominating a member to the Jasper County Appraisal District Board of Directors for the 2012-2013 year.
I'd like to nominate, um, help you, Scott.
We have a nomination for resolution nominating Alton Scott to the appraisal district. Is there any other nominations? All those in favor of nominating him or putting him on the board to represent Jasper, do we have a motion?
I have a second.
Okay, there's a motion, okay. We have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Tommy, Adams is a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Let the record show it, it is unanimous. Consider resolution number 2912 endorsing the principle of fair and open housing is set forth entitled Eight of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. Do we have a motion?
So may.
Alton Scott making motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second, but Terry Norsworthi, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Discussion. What was the Civil Rights Act of 1968?
Well, it's something that we do every, every year. I think we have to review this every year, is that not right, Tommy?
Yes.
And it goes to do with our.
All our grants.
Yes, on the grants. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Let the record show, there is none. We have two upcoming, we have two items on the agenda tonight to have to do with the November the 8th recall election. Since we have some people here that are involved in that, we have the city attorney come forward at this time and devise what to do.
City council, the item number four and item number five, and you've got your agenda in front of you. First one is to consider the appointment of election judges for the November 8th recall election. Item number four. Next, item number five, considering approving and setting the date for canvassing the votes, November the 17th, 2011. Mayor Lau, I respectfully request that these two items of agenda be tabled at this meeting at this time. The reason for tabling those two items from the agenda in this meeting is the fact that Councilman Sayers is not present at this meeting. And in order to be able to effectively approve the election judges for the November 8th recall election and the canvassing of votes stemming from the recall election on November the 8th, canvassing them on November the 17th, these two items directly relate to the recall election of Councilman Norsworthi, Councilman Land, and Councilman Adams. Because they directly affect these council persons, they cannot participate in the approving of the election judges for this recall election. Therefore, it would remain that the only persons left to consider the appointment of the election judges or canvassing the votes would be Councilman Sayers and Councilman Scott. Since Councilman Sayers is not present, we do not have a sufficient quorum to vote on these election judges at this particular meeting. It would be my recommendation to the council, first of all, my recommendation to you, Mayor Lau, that these two items be tabled, that a recall, a special council meeting be scheduled next week when Councilman Sayers returns Monday or Tuesday.
See y'all be back Monday?
Uh, Tommy, do we have?
You could be on a wait and they let us sun Saturday morning, so they should be back in this weekend. I find that wrong.
And that when Councilman Sayers returns, that we post a notice for a special cause city council meeting to address these two items at that special cause meeting.
Do we have to, Adams, Land, and Norsworthi, do we have to, do we have to vote?
Well, if it's a special cause meeting, I would hope that the council, or at least one of you, would be present at the special cause city council meeting.
Wouldn't they have to be here for us to have a quorum?
At least one of them, at least one of them would have to be present.
Okay, but then that person would have to abstain if they didn't move forward.
That's correct. That is correct.
Now, how's this going to, I wish Ms. Peak was here. How's this gonna go with the timetable and when this, when does this must be done?
Well, according to Mrs. Peak, in talking with her today, we need to do it next week. The early voting will start for these recall elections on October the 24th, which is a Monday, I believe, is that correct? So we need to have the election judges in place and their workers in place before the early voting of November the 23rd. Because of the fact that the, and I wanna address this, Mayor Lau, because of the fact that the recall elections deal with Councilman Norsworthi, Land, and Adams is one reason for tabling the election judges for these recalls from their participation. Another reason certainly is the lawsuit which has been filed against the city by the three council persons of which they're plaintiffs. And they cannot participate in any matters that the lawsuit deals with. Certainly the lawsuit which was in federal court deals primarily with the recall election. So, again, my opinion and my recommendation to you, Mayor Lau, is that these two items, four and five, be tabled at this session until Councilman Sayers returns, at which time we have Councilman Scott and Councilman Sayers available together with the other council members who attend the meeting, hopefully one of them will, doing their duty as a councilman. And then we would have sufficient quorum and sufficient council persons to move to appoint the election judges and to canvass the votes.
So this is your opinion? Is this something that's in the charter or this is your?
Well, well, again, Councilman Norsworthi, because of the lawsuit that is pending.
Yes, I understand that.
You cannot participate in any, or I would not recommend that the council, that the mayor participate in any vote that directly or indirectly relates to matters concerning of the lawsuit. And the lawsuit itself deals with the recall elections, suing for money damages, and violations of voting rights acts. So because of the lawsuit that in and of itself disqualifies the three council persons from voting in regards to anything that has to do with the lawsuit, which would be election judges.
Okay, so is that, is that in the charter?
That is not in your charter. That is my opinion and that's also the opinion of the attorney that's representing the city, uh, the, in the civil lawsuit.
Is that in writing somewhere? Is that in writing somewhere? So we can all have a copy of that?
Uh, no, but I will certainly give you a, my opinion as to your ability to participate in these two agenda items.
Why don't you give us some?
I'm giving it to you right now. My opinion is that all three of you are disqualified.
I want something in writing to that fact.
Okay, well, I will have, I will get that to you. But again, as the city attorney, Mayor Lau, I am instructing you not to, to table these two items that are on the agenda until.
Okay, but, okay, what I would like to do is, is have the city attorney, I mean, the city manager or the city secretary get in touch with Mr. Sayers.
Okay.
And find out when he's gonna be back.
Sure.
Go ahead and post that meeting for.
I recommend that.
As soon as he's back, because I, you know, I don't want us to be next Monday posting it for Wednesday or something and then run into some problem.
Right. I would suggest that we post it tomorrow as quickly as we can, once we get verification of his return.
Even, even though we start the meeting with four, only two city councilmen can be eligible to vote, right?
Yes. So that would be Mr. Sayers, Mr. Scott, and if they were not able to agree, then you would have the mayor as a time breaker.
May I?
As a time breaker, yes, according to our charter. And that's for the election, the appointment of the election judges.
I still would like to have something in writing to that fact, not from your opinion, but something concrete, not your opinion.
Right. If you want a brief on that concerning the conflict of interest, get you a brief on that, but we will do that. True. And again, I'm not trying to cast funds, I'm just saying, the complexity of what the council is in this issue that deals with recall election is a matter that is a subject to a lawsuit in which three of our council persons are plaintiffs in against the city. That's one. Two, it deals with a recall election dealing with the three council persons that are the subject of the recall and they must abstain from participation in matters relating to recall, including the appointment of election judges. That's my opinion and if you want.
Okay, they've got a recall election against me, so the same will be true?
Yes.
That whenever that comes up for me, then I don't have, I don't get a say, I don't have, I can't have you say so to who the election judge is.
That's correct. That's all I have to say, Mr. Lau, concerning those two items.
Okay, then with that, I guess that we will postpone those items until, do we need to vote on this or what?
No.
Okay, so we'll postpone, I move that we postpone those items and the council's in agreement to instruct the city manager to get in touch with Mr. Sayers and the city secretary to post a meeting at the earliest time we can get this rectified.
Now, the city attorney said table. And if it's table, it would have to be voted on to be tabled. Did you say table?
I'm not saying that it needs to be.
Table or not.
Are you saying table or not act on?
Not act on.
That's different.
Okay. Okay, up next, then we, go ahead.
What if those three councilmen win the, the, the reelection, well, that would let.
We won't have a, are you talking about the lawsuit in Beaumont or the injunctive? Excuse me.
Yeah, if there's an injunction, I.
Again, the lawsuit that deals with the injunction, declaratory relief and for money damages in, in Beaumont that we were at today. One of the aspects of that lawsuit is the injunctive relief asking the federal judge to enjoin or to stop the recall election on November the 8th. If the judge so grants that injunctive relief, there will be no election on November the 8th.
Everything is known.
The lawsuit is still pending, but there will not be a recall election on November the 8th.
All right.
Let's rectify that, I have interned requested information regarding that, his opinion, but I want something concrete. Thank you.
So you're gonna issue a letter of your opinion? Okay. Consider ordinance number 11-10-1, TMRS buyback prior forfeited service. Tommy, would you explain this to?
Mr. Wagner. Mr. Wagner? I'm trying to do this real quick here. It's only the first page, this, maybe the rest of it, we haven't got back. This is actually a request from Derek Woods. Mr. Woods was employed for a little more, about ten and a half years, I guess, with us. And then he resigned and withdrew all of his pension monies from the Texas municipal retirement system. And then he was re-employed by the police department in 9/08/09. And he's now requested that the council pass the resolution to authorize the redeposit of his funds and to restore his ten and a half years of retirement credit. Under the TMRS rules, the city council can authorize employees to buy back this previously refunded pension service by redepositing the total amount that he withdrew earlier plus 5% per year for each year that the funds were out of the system. To be eligible to purchase, every employee must be, have at least 24 months of service from the time that they've returned. You have to be an employee on the city at the date of adoption and you must submit your total payments directly to TMRS with the application. And the timeframe for it is relatively short, I think it's only about three months maximum that you have to do this. Federal law actually controls the whole thing if the council passes the ordinance. Under federal law, once your authorization is passed, all employees with previously refunded service are eligible for inclusion. We currently have 16 employees, which is enlisted in your package there with both the amounts of money that they withdrew, that they would have to return, and the amount of the penalty of the 5% per year for each year that it's been out of the system. Once authorized by the council, TMRS will handle all the paperwork, they insist on doing everything themselves. If all 16 employees participated in this, the cost to the city is estimated by TMRS to be $273,277 in additional benefits to these 16 employees. And it would also, we would incur an additional pension charge, starting in January, of about 0.41% of our monthly payroll, or an additional $1,512 each month to start to fund this, these types of benefits.
Would they have to pay this, would they pay this on a timely basis or would they have to pay?
If they do not, they can't participate. You either pay all or nothing, and the amount of monies that they have to pay is on about your third sheet back there. That's the best of the employees that are affected. The amounts of, where it says refunded amount is the actual amount of money that they would have to put back, and then plus the accrual penalty, which is on the far right.
So we've only had one individual to inquire regarding that?
Yes, this is actually, TMRS recommends against doing this. There's a, even in a 5%.
They would have this money had they not quit the city.
That's right, each of these employees voluntarily.
We're paying $273,000 to come back.
Yes, you're gonna let them do that, because the financial return to them obviously is much higher than.
Isn't, isn't staying with the city part of, isn't this part of it? Who's all this doing, all this talking out here? We got a meeting in place here. Wouldn't, isn't this, their retirement plan and the great gains that they make is an incentive that the city set in place for city employees to stay with the city. And basically, if we do this, we're saying that you can leave the city, get your money and then come back and we will, we'll come back in.
That's exactly right.
So you're talking about putting $35,000 back into an account? Is that what I see down here?
Yes, for Mr. Woods, his would be $35,931.28, that's the amount that he withdrew two years ago. And he would have to then put an additional penalty amount of $4,790.84 in addition to the 35.
Is all his name up in here? Is all his name up, they want to come back in this?
They, under federal law, if you permit Mr. Woods, then every person on this list has a right to do the same thing. And that's the amounts of money they'd have to pay and their penalties if they wanted to do that. Virtually every employee that withdrew money and left the city previously and has been re-employed again.
I don't know how beneficial it is to the city, but I don't know, it's pretty much standard in the education, in the Texas teachers.
Do other cities do this?
No, as I said, that's why it's, there's such an arduous process in order to do it. One is the federal law that requires if you do it for one, you have to offer it to every person who can qualify. And, you know, as I said, we have never done one here before.
Well, I don't mean that we don't start now.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr., well, we don't need a motion, there's been discussion. Is there any motion to do this? Okay, there's no motion, no second. Okay, we go to item number seven. Consider interdepartmental transfer to fill building inspector one slash carpenter position. Who's gonna explain this to?
We opened the position for building inspector one carpenter. We took applications internal within the city, had four applications. Mr. Collier looked over those applications and the most qualified was Derek Boykin, was coming to council tonight to transfer him. It'll be an interdepartmental transfer from Latin higher lineman over to building inspector one trainee slash carpenter. Derek's been doing most of our. Derek's been doing most of our city carpenter work for the last, well, the two years I've been back and before that. And he has knowledge of electrical wiring, lime work, carpenter work. He can frame a building and we need someone to start training for a building inspector. We had the incident with Mr. Collier in the Ford pickup and we could have been looking for someone to fill that position, but with council's approval, we'll make this transfer and start Mr. Derek Boykin on his training.
We have a motion on this item? A motion by Mr. Tommy Adams is their second?
Second.
Mr. Willie Lee Land with a second. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye? Any opposition? Let the record show that there is no opposition. With no other action that can be taken on the item, I move to adjourn after 31 minutes after the hour.